Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Thank you for showing up for this. How the meeting in order?
I need to make a couple of changes to the agenda.
All right, go ahead.
If you could put it down bottom, discussion or action on continuing Zoom meetings after we decide what they were opened. And then hazard pay for election officials.
Those discuss too?
Yes.
If I get a motion for that, amended agenda.
I will make a motion for amended agenda. Talk about.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. amended agenda approved. Minutes from the previous meeting?
I assume everything looks in order, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Minutes approved. All right, general public concerns? General public, telepathically, Zoom wise, anyone there that have general public concerns?
Kent is there, but.
Okay.
Morning, Kent.
There he is. Okay, hearing none. We will move along and so most of this ties together for the reopening of the courthouse and the discussion thereof. So whoever wants to start with that.
We did receive something from the court system saying that they're calling for the resumption of non-jury trials on July thirteenth and September fourteenth for jury trials. So they're backing it off quite a ways. And they are supposed to be putting together some safety protocols by the state court administration. I'm gonna wait to see what those are to see if there's any way that we can comply with them, depending on how stringent they are.
So what was the dates they were waiting on?
They were opening on the thirteenth, July thirteenth, for non-jury trials and September fourteenth for jury trials. And in the meantime, then the state court administrator will be putting together some safety protocols.
Is magistrate considered non-jury or not?
I would assume so. I don't know the terminology right, but I guess I would assume that. That'd be a good cherry question. Got some policies from a couple of counties, Harrison County and Blackhawk, as to what they're doing on reopening, what their restrictions are gonna be. I thought if you guys wanted to see them, I certainly could share them with you. Most of them are doing what we talked about, doors closed to the public, conduct business by appointment only, with a dark box out front, calls are received and screened to determine the service needed. Recommend or highly encourage the public to wear cloth masks upon entry, recommend using hand sanitizer upon entry and exiting the facility. I was able to purchase some stands for hand sanitizer because I didn't want to drill anything into the wall. If you set a bottle out, the bottle disappears. Well, I've got the stands, but the hand sanitizer's on that order. So I'm hoping that it will get here by the time that we open it. If not, we may have to go back to some, we'll use the spray bottles, the stuff we got from the distillery, the watered-down sanitizer. We'll use that first so that hopefully people will walk off of that. Blackhawk County does face masks. Must be worn by both employees and members of the public. This is a natural policy. If you're working with, according to Public Health, if you're working with employees to require employees to wear masks, you have to have a policy. You don't do that with the public, you suggest. So, and it goes in to describe when they can remove their face mask if they're in their own office by themselves or if they're driving alone in a vehicle or if they're in court during a hearing or whatever. So, but then they have a place where they can monitor that. When you go in the Blackhawk County courthouse, there's a belt like there is like when you go in the State House. You just lay your stuff there.
You go through it.
They screen them. But they have someone who can say, if you don't have a mask on, you're not coming in. And they have some they'll hand out to people if people need them. So that one's a little more stringent. But those are the only two I saw out there that had something anyway, as far as guidelines. People are just starting to kind of get back to opening up, so.
Well, I think we should still do appointment only. I really do. I think we should keep closed with appointment only. And that way we can kind of monitor how many people are really coming in. Because you know, once we open the doors, there's gonna be a rush for the treasurer's office. That's probably the busiest right now, wouldn't you say? And I'd like to at least continue that way for a couple of weeks, but it's a pain in the ass. I hate to say that. And if everything else is opening up restaurants, everything, bars, if we can have the signage and the markings in place, hopefully they'll act like adults in two weeks, probably, to be educated.
So the front door's gonna be open, but every office is gonna be closed, is that what you're asking for, Jen?
I would say that'd be fine until, I was hoping to give it two more weeks with like what Dave said of opening the building and giving us time to get our signage in place and our educated, open.
Two weeks just by appointment with the doors locked. So they can still get in, but they need the appointment for you to let them in.
Right, just like it is right now.
Yeah, doesn't matter if the courthouse door is open, I guess.
From what I understand, listening to the governor, she's gonna review all this on the seventeenth. And she may close everything back down. So I would suggest, you know, leave all the offices closed.
Would you suggest leaving the courthouse doors locked so that it's like standing?
I would say.
Because you never know what like the clarification, appointment only is, yes, if they have an appointment, they can go to the office and conduct whatever business at whatever office, but they can't just walk up to the office and.
No, I think we still need to have the doors locked, escort them, kind of do the, like what you've been doing for the next couple of weeks.
I love it, but then we don't have the traffic.
Right, but still, we can.
I like facing and telling people when they can come and.
And then you can say.
We just run down our side door.
To wear a mask if they want to or whatever, I imagine.
And we're getting, just because Tyler used to with us, we're getting people calling us from the parking lot and we're pretty much able to deal with them. At that time.
I do know that, like I say, it's a lot up and down the dang stairs.
Well, we're all in the wellness.
I know, I need one. My phone, but I don't carry that with me.
But going out on the third floor.
I would not like that elevator stolen.
Mention something, in a larger, more staff courthouse, if you have the doors open, there's typically probably someone there monitoring it. And that is the traffic control. I guess our traffic control is the doors locked.
The thing is, if they have the front door open, we're gonna have twenty people sit in the hallway.
Right. And is that safe?
And then you got the argument, well, who's here first? Who goes next?
Right.
You don't know what.
And the extra cleaning for the custodian, because now he's just cleaning up after us. But once you open, you're cleaning for everybody because you don't know where they've been.
It's sort of our small courthouse way of controlling the traffic. Because we don't have a security person to say, okay, you can come in because this person went out and they can monitor it. But we don't have that person, obviously. And so that just seems to make sense. You still have people, Jen, coming into the office right now.
Because they're starting to do driver's license now again, right? Pans back.
No, it's by appointment also. She extended the penalty date to June twenty-fifth.
Not a lot of help.
Yeah, we still have the issue with C E L drivers because not every state's honoring those extensions. If you cross coming state lines, you could be in a bind.
So Dave, your suggestion is another two weeks as status call?
Yep, let's see what the governor's gonna do because like.
Will that get us to the, you said the seventeenth? She's gonna reevaluate?
What I understand, the seventeenth, she's gonna reevaluate.
Is that?
Because on the.
No, I don't think it's the fifteenth.
If you go online and look at restaurants and bars until the seventeenth, and you can be open from now till the seventeenth. But she may look at it and close them then, moving back down. So I would say until she makes up her mind, so we're legal. Just let it ride the way it is right now for another two weeks.
Does that make sense to everybody?
I would think by the two weeks of doing that, it will give us an indicator as to what she's leaning towards on the seventeenth.
I would think so. The way the riots and stuff are going in Des Moines, she may shut it down earlier.
Well, the good news was last night they were more peaceful and more sensible.
How's that Miller vibe that I got charged with? The news was there till about eleven o'clock and then they all helped.
So, I'm just gathering all the comments. Two weeks, status call.
I would make a motion, we leave it as is till the fifteenth, by appointment, by appointment only.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that?
That gets us through the election and everything, so.
He said the fourteenth?
Fifteenth.
Could I get?
Change the, add the number of the driver's license on the sign.
Oh, yeah.
Two nine nine three number. Because she's making her own appointments separate from our motor vehicle tax. Probably to educate people to call this number for driver's license, this number for motor vehicle tax.
The only complaint I've heard is people say it takes multiple calls to get through.
And we get phone calls saying, I can't get the treasurer's office. How come?
Maybe that will help.
Didn't you say let me jump out and all?
No, no, no. I let them know I can transfer because we're gonna get busy too.
Well, they can call back.
We gotta call that out. She's gonna take somebody's call.
So.
They have to remember. It's just, you have limited staff and if you get three people working in there and they're all busy, they're gonna pick up.
Right.
I mean.
If we are on the phone, it takes longer to explain what we need them to do. So phone calls take longer. You can't.
I have a motion, but not a second.
Yeah, no, I think like.
Any second.
I'm sorry, I didn't say last.
And I guess that's the discussion. And it's for status call, as I would call it, for two weeks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Two weeks.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Do you go back to the discussion of Zoom meeting?
Yeah, same thing.
Same as two weeks. You have a motion on that.
That thing should be just basically part of our.
Does it mean once?
No, I'm not mad.
No, no, baby. What I'm saying is if, if we request to have it because someone is, one of the board members can't attend, it'd be nice to Zoom in.
Okay.
Yeah, or if somebody from Des Moines, Doug was gonna talk to us over the.
Over the phone.
Radio or whatever.
Yeah. I think it'd be much easier to do it over Zoom than it would just over the phone.
Then you would need to know ahead of time for each meeting, because you have to have the meeting ahead of time.
Oh, darn it.
You have to have it at least set up, you know, Friday before so you can bring it in.
Okay, so. But we do have the ability to, I mean, we've already paid the fee for the whole year, probably, I don't know. Because you said you had to pay a fee to get this Zoom.
Well, I haven't received a bill yet, so I don't know.
Maybe not, okay.
I thought Zoom was free.
It is up to a certain number of people. But if you put it out there for more than a certain number, then it has a fee.
I would just suggest that we follow at least a two-week timeframe on the Zoom. I think that, well, I made a note about, you know, with the courthouse reopening. A concern too for our meetings is number of people. This is about enough. I mean, we need to, if you get, if you don't have the option of a teleconference Zoom type thing for, you know, you could, you know, we ask for public concerns. We get those occasionally. We don't want.
If we don't have the Zoom available, then we almost have to unlock the front door so people can.
And then we don't want, at this point.
A lot of people.
Six people showing up because we're maxing out our area.
Yeah.
You can't bring a bunch of your friends with you.
Some might have a bunch of friends.
Well, I believe in yourself. But you know what I mean? If we get that without the ability.
Right.
Then we're, you know.
We need to keep this in place until the courthouse is opened up.
Completely opened up.
And that option, kind of like you mentioned. It gives the folks the option to listen to the meeting, see the meeting, to make comments.
Well, has the governor listed the ten?
No.
That's just it, really. We have to do it until she lists the ten, if you really think about it.
She's thinking about lifting it. She's gonna let wedding parties and social gatherings and stuff go. But she still wants to limit each group to ten in the group.
Right. So see, until she lists that, you can't get more than what we had in here can be what you really wanna say socially distant.
I agree.
I can't squeeze any further back.
And, you know, to me, those numbers, whether you say it's whatever number, ten, four, five, six, twenty, I think that's all relevant to space. I mean, you could maybe have a small reception with a couple dozen people, but you better have room.
The area.
That they aren't all, you know, grouped together. So the same thing. Pardon us for missing many more words.
Oh, don't, no. It's not that big of a deal.
But it's a headache. I can tell by Peggy's response to the L E T meeting, no Zoom meetings. Well, we have a little different thing there. A, we can never have anyone attend them, the board members. And we can always get a big enough venue for our social distancing, so.
And I think probably all contact solutions. And they have been good enough, what I haven't said before, is they've been good enough to let us share their Zoom capacity.
Oh, okay.
So at this point, they have not billed us for it. I'm sure we will get some kind of a billing.
Okay.
But if we're gonna continue with it into the future, we should have our own account.
Yeah.
And take care of it that way. So right now, they're just being nice to us, so.
Yeah, that's good.
So what is that? Do you know what the limit is, Peggy, for the Zoom?
One of the first meetings that we had, and it's based on capacity of people on, you know, like Zoom says, you can have this many people across this and you can have this many people. We had like twelve people on here. And I kept getting, your bandwidth is full or something like that message, that first couple of meetings. And so I got ahold of them and they said, oh, yeah, if you've got twelve people on there at one time, that's a lot. That takes up a lot of, plus have all the courthouse people on there. So he suggests if we're gonna continue at that to expand our bandwidth again, we just moved that not too long ago. Increased it because treasurer was having some problems. So we could increase it again with gold-filled access if we need to. But I don't know that we'll have twelve people on there at a time, you know, at a time. But we'll probably go with the bigger package anyway, just in case. Because sometimes on those drainage hearings, if you want somebody to.
That would be. I mean, we have landowners in California.
Right. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, see, and that would be a way for them to be able to be a part of it, right? Without being here.
Yeah.
So I'll get a whole solution.
What about, I know you do Zoom, but one of the, I think it's C E S that they have, it's called go-to meeting? They do the go-to. And there's another one that we do with, I will work for, I have three different, you know, there's, I can't think of what that one is called. It's his button. So I don't know if you wanna look into any of those other ones and see maybe they, you know, price-wise, if we have to have our own account, which would be the best way for us to go?
Okay, okay.
Can check that too.
Well, I guess that's just discussion. We're not really acting, I think. We're gonna maintain.
I, we had C E F R meeting on Thursday night and it's just conference call and it's a mess.
Oh, I don't want to.
Because you can't hear.
No.
And then you got fourteen people trying to make motions. And all of a sudden, it sounded like it echoed. And who was that? What was first?
Yeah.
And then, so when you do that many on a conference call, everybody's trying to keep it moving. It's like, oh.
Yeah. Dave, I had you for a motion on it. Do you wanna withdraw your motion? It doesn't have to.
On, you mean continuing the Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, withdraw it.
Okay.
Yes, because that way you see it says there's twenty, almost thirty of us on there. And it's, I think that's the go-to one. It's not quite as bad, but it still is delays. You still have that echoing. The more you have on, the more it's gonna do that way well.
I could tell these guys couldn't when we said the pledge, when you were on Zoom, you were like either.
You're a little bit behind.
Yeah, you're a little bit behind.
You're like an echo.
Probably due to the, yeah.
So is it a little more where we need to have used dirt, the thing, a little earlier or it's becoming now?
But, well, that could be. But otherwise, it went pretty well. And I like Rick's comment that it does give you the option because you may be somewhere or maybe something not comfortable being there.
Well, if you gotta vote, if you gotta vote and we're gonna have someone and you are gonna be gone, you can still join in and cast your vote.
Yeah. And for, this isn't the twenty-five-member board, so typically you don't have too much confusion.
If there's a small number on Zoom, it works pretty good. It's when you get a dozen people on there that all wanna talk.
Yeah. I do have some problems sometimes with hearing, you know, like when I'm moving the computer around and facing it, I can't hear what they're saying to me. But the listeners tell me I can get external speakers.
External speakers.
That's just what I was gonna say. I'd recommend.
Same thing when we're on Zoom. If the laptop isn't pointed at who's talking.
You can't hear them.
You really have a hard time picking up.
Okay, that's why we probably need to.
I bet you something like.
And I have a mic, it's a small mic.
I said, you probably are a tech type person, I can tell.
Yeah. There are options out there for external speakers. I tend to be as concerned with what Ben is addressing always, like, when Sandy is speaking, it is so hard to hear her just because of the distance problem.
We'll get you a microphone.
Just run over the computer and just.
Well, we might pick up fine, but we don't pick up here. And I have an external mic, but it still, even if I had this on the table, it would reach you. It might bring it up better. Let's try it next week and let's.
Okay.
There you go.
We can play with that.
Yeah.
And I will say with you guys, Zoom has been a lot easier. When I do it with the city council meeting, like city council meetings, about halfway through the meeting, it freezes up. It just drops out. We end up having to like call me, Kent, Mike Worthington, who's been doing all of Zoom. You just have to call it right in teleconference, send it through different cell phones because Zoom just keeps cutting out and it gets kind of annoying when you're trying to, but just be sitting there, they'll be discussing something.
And then you kind of lose what you really wanted to hear.
That's too bad.
Well, this is.
Reassess the fourteen, the fifteenth.
Well, for sure, I'm sure the guy's gonna say, I know that'll come up in that conversation, that the two-week conversation on the.
It was on the fifteenth's agenda.
Yeah.
And maybe this will be on the normal. Maybe on the normal, we'll include that aspect of it too, if that's true.
As I said, nothing's gonna go back to the way it was completely. So we'll have to accept that and.
So on the amended agenda, we have the election officials and hazardous pay for them.
I've been hearing from several other county auditors, we have this email system where we can email just the auditors. And people are saying they're asking their supervisors for hazard pay for their election officials because they're working through the COVID-nineteen area. We're providing them with a lot of protective equipment, but I think we're very fortunate. There are some people who are still struggling for election officials. I was able to get some of our very good workers to say yes to work this election. But you get into the general, and we're gonna have to have more than two precincts. And I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get all the people that I need. I'd like to reward them in some way with some additional pay. Right now, they make, God, is it nine and a quarter and eight and a quarter an hour? And I would like to give them somewhere between four and five dollar increase per hour for working this election. It'd be just a temporary, you know, one-time thing. Address it again if we have to go through this again in November. But they're gonna be out there all day, face-to-face with people and.
Well, they're talking, what, ten people maybe?
Yeah, nine.
I think we already increased it.
I agree with Dave. I mean, that's an essential thing they do. And thank gosh, we have them people that will step up and do that.
Right.
Because it does get to be a long day.
It does.
Very long day, well.
Yeah. And they can't leave.
No.
Well, on the other side of the coin is, is the people that are going to, they've had opportunity to absentee.
Right.
And we would hope that they will not come if they have any type of symptoms. We don't need someone. But that's just common sense. And that's what I worry about, whether people come to the door and you're coughing and whatever. We don't, don't do it.
There's a lot of people with spring colds right now.
Oh, and allergies.
That's the allergy, yeah. So you can't determine between the two of them if you should back off or not.
So I guess I'd like a number that you said four or five. What was your, what are you thinking?
I think four dollars an hour would be good. As far as you.
I, I guess that.
I'll make that motion to increase the hazard pay four bucks an hour for election officials.
I might have to stop and help.
Do you second that, Dave? I'll second it. Any further discussion on that?
And I just wanted to say, I have no idea what turnout's gonna be. You know, we do, we have record numbers of attendees for our primary. I mean, we just don't normally have this many, but I'm very glad we do because it reduces the amount of people who are actually gonna go to the polls.
Yeah. But still, some are. And the polls are open.
Yep, and that's their right. They definitely can go to the polls. We just have to keep them protected.
Yes.
Right. I agree.
Oh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Passes. So if we've covered everything from reopening for now to the election, good luck with that. Hope it goes very well.
Are you gonna need help? I mean, you don't have all the machines coming in, right?
No, we only have two precincts, so we'll have two machines coming back.
So you won't need help tomorrow night?
Won't really need a lot.
All right, go on. Okay.
We're not doing any runners this time. Usually the runners go out and get the carts out of the machine or the T M to bring back. We're not gonna do that this time since we only had two. We'll be heading out later on this afternoon. We have to set up a precinct for the election officials because we've got all those acrylic shields to put up. We have social distancing signs to put on the floor. We wanna make sure that every person that's working has their own bottle of hand sanitizer. Are they able to get those? We have some spray bottles with antiseptic stuff in it to clean the counters. You have to clean in between every voter so they can clean their space. They can clean the voting booth. They can clean the machine off. And then we also have spray bottles of hand sanitizer. And I told the election officials that they have an extra worker that's not handing out ballots or checking in people with the precinct ballot. They can make sure that anyone coming in gets a sprig of hand sanitizer while they're on the grill. Everything at the polling place will be disposable. We made our own secrecy sleeves, fold them in half. Our secrecy sleeves are kind of costly, but they can't be reused. So we're just plain paper, we're secrecy sleeve on, you know, use the computer and fix it up. And so people, if they want a secrecy sleeve, can take it when they're done with it, they throw it in the garbage. They'll be issued a pin, and that pin stays with them. If they want a pin, they take it home.
That's your thing.
They throw it in the garbage. It does not get reused.
At least get them a little sticker.
So when the voter comes in, they're gonna scan their driver's license so that precinct ballot picks it up. The barrier will be there. They'll hold the driver's license up to that across windows so the P O can see it, make sure that it's valid, that it's not expired, has the right address on it, all that information that we have to have. Then they will hand them back their declarations of eligibility. The voter will sign it. They take it down to the person handing out the ballots. They're gonna hold that up to the window, let the P O see it through the acrylic window there. And then they will pick out the right ballot for them, push it back through underneath, back to them, and then they'll go over and they'll hold their ballot. So. And then they'll throw away the secrecy sleeve, like I said, the pin. They'll put the ballot through the tabulator and everything should be good. We also will have curbside voting. Curbside voting used to be just for people who had some kind, type of a handicap. It's a little more lenient this time. We're not gonna ask anybody, do you have a, you know, reason why you.
Disbelting.
Yes, disbelting any type. If you wanna vote for your car, I told the election officials to keep watch out the door. If someone is sitting in the driveway in their car, please go out. And it takes two election officials to go out. And they'll take their ballot to them, have them voted in the car. And they'll take their ballot to them, have them voted in the car. They'll take it back, put it in the machine for them, and they're all done.
Nice.
So.
Sounds like we're doing everything we can.
Yeah, we're trying. Yeah, we do everything.
Good job, Peggy.
Trying to make it easy for them. Trying to protect everybody. So. And just hopefully, a nice day like this. We don't have to worry about it personally.
Will we do that, when we do the, don't we have to do the election?
Canvas election.
Canvas the election?
Canvas the election. We'll canvass that the Monday following.
Also, it'll be next month.
Yep. Yep. We have to allow enough time for any absentee to come in. We have roughly, I'd say around 250 left to come in. But Monday's usually a big male day, so we'll probably get quite a few back then. Some people will never vote their absentee. Some people will get their ballot, look at it, and say, "Oh, I don't want to vote after all." And then you just never see it again. And some people will send them back. So.
Okay.
We'll see how many come back.
All right. Committee reports. I had nothing this week.
I had Tuesday night, Edno, I was saying before. We're trying to, or the people with Edno and the childcare and whatnot, they're trying to go backwards in like David mentioned last week, reopening for school. And we kind of what-if that until the cows come home. And finally, it's just like, until they set the guidelines, we're just kind of beating this up, aren't we? And then, yeah, but we have to at least put it in place. So we talked about that for, seemed like an hour. Then on Thursday night, I had a conference call for CFR. Everything's going good down there.
With Edno meeting a teleconference, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that was the only two that, no, the other one's a church meeting. I don't get credit for that.
All right. Wednesday, I was supposed to have a C F S meeting on Zoom, but I was not able to do that. Thursday, we have an Iowa workforce development for Region Five. We're going to stay Region Five still. We've got our bylaws and our 28E. It's down with the state, and they have not given us the okay yet. They changed one more thing after we did that, and I can't remember what it was now. But, and then we're trying, we got to get our workforce development board up. And we did get all of our providers. Everybody agreed to do that, that we needed. So we have that through the end of December. It's just getting everything okay with the state. And of course, everything's taking longer because of this COVID stuff. And then Friday, Eric and I went down south of, on Iowa, South on Iowa. We met with Brian Hemlin for a pretty good-sized ditch erosion in the drainage ditch. So he went through all of that with us, and it's something that's going to need to get fixed up. It's pretty bad. It's probably, I think it's been going on, we probably figured at least a couple of years with all this extra water. The embankment is really washed out. Yeah. And he's got to do a little bit of clean out there, a little bit, too. So, yeah, it's good meeting him, and him explaining everything to us. It sounded like a good plan. That was it.
Okay. On Tuesday, I was down to the B A office and approved claims. We've been going in, still the meeting, we just ran into it through one. We're down on clients this month again. I think we only had five that were going to come in under budget, like our budget for last year. Wednesday, I had a Zoom meeting with Region Five hazmat. It went pretty good. The new truck's here, and they're trying to get it to have a counter so they can look at it. And Wednesday afternoon, I had a Zoom meeting with Midas, which lasted almost an hour and 45 minutes. They got a lot accomplished there. They're still talking about the buses and how to clean them and what to do with them and when to go back normal routes and things like that. Friday night, we took the flags down. That's all I had.
Dave, with on that hazmat truck, are they getting rid of the old one then? Are they going to keep that spare?
The old one is for sale. They've talked about different ways of selling it. They're going to put the word out, sounds like, to all the fire departments. They've got an area magazine or something. They're going to try and put it in that.
Yeah, a big place.
They said they'd like to keep it in the area, but they said they wouldn't put it out. So anybody in the state gets this memo or whatever it is that, from the fire departments, they could probably sell it through that if anybody was interested.
So was it Carroll, it was, was it Carroll County that was...
They were driving that.
Very concrete, but they went along with the drive.
Yeah. All mine counties are on it right now.
Oh, they were selling it there.
Yep.
I've seen it go down the road.
Did you?
I can't remember what day it was. Went down, I can't remember, went west.
Yeah, they've had, as of last week, they had two calls on it, I think. So it's been used.
So do they have a normal, like a guy that just drives it all the time wherever it's at? And he's the guy that runs out? Or is it...
There's actually the hazmat crew in the fire department in Fort Dyke. It's stationed down at Fort Dyke.
Okay.
And they, when they get a call away, they've got an actual hazmat group of fires, fighters that go with it. They've got their masks and apparatuses in there.
They've been trained on everything.
They've got air onboard. They need something to blow up their jacks or air tools. It's quite aggressive from what the video they showed us was.
Well, hopefully, we'll get it up to Humboldt to see. That'd be interesting to show the public, anyway.
They've done a walk-around on it and videoed it, and they showed that to us.
You don't like seeing that because that usually means you've had an antihypertension. Gas still or something like that, but it still would be...
We talked about, I think there's three, three or four that is about a year old that hasn't paid the back yet. And we talked about what to do with them. Sound like they're going to get a letter from a lawyer. We've got one in Humboldt County, had one on the railroad. I think we'll probably forgive it, but it was like $100 and something. Didn't worth going after the lawyers on that one. But the rest of them, and I think they had one in Webster County, that they were going to go after. That's all I had.
Wednesday the 27th, I had a de-categorization Zoom meeting that afternoon. And then on Friday, as Sandy had mentioned, we went and looked at the washout concern. They're not too far from Pioneer with Brian Hemlin. So that was my two extracurricular things last week. So do you have anything else we haven't already looked through?
I can give you an update. The Dietrich family, after Jerry passed away, wanted to do a memorial bench for the Park House. I think I mentioned that before. And he called last week. The driver was en route and was ready to bring it and drop it off. And I said, "Okay." And he said, "Do you have any equipment unloaded?" And I said, "No." They were two little carts, you know, we don't have a ton.
Sure, it's quite heavy.
He said, "It's 500 pounds."
Oh, wow.
And he said, "Well, can we drive around to the point I'm going to put it out front?" And I said, "It's been raining here for days." You know, by then, the ground was so soggy, was like a sponge when you walked on it. I said, "If you drive over that grass, our custodian is going to be afraid of that." He thinks it's looking very nice. "Oh, gee, I better call the guy and have him come back." And he apologized because he was supposed to call me ahead of time and say, "Is it okay to come?" And he didn't do that, does. So they are coming some other day. He was going to drop it off and say, "Well, then you guys can just move it where you want it later." And I said, "We don't have equipment to move it with. We just have that two little cart. Will it fit on the two little cart?" "No, it's too heavy. It will break the two little cart. I told them, 'Don't come.'" So he will be bringing that hopefully within the next week or so. When it starts to dry out a little bit, and it'll be tough for it.
Okay.
So is he going to have something to unload it? Or, I mean, if I have advanced...
See, I don't know what he's...
I can schedule her here.
Yeah, I mean, we got a quilter if you get unloaded, if we know when he's coming.
Okay. I will ask him because he's supposed to call me ahead of time and say, you know, "Coming tomorrow" or something like that.
I'm assuming, I mean, I don't really know what this bench is going to look like.
Yeah, see, I don't either.
I mean, you know, before we go.
Ask them if it's going to be like in a crate, if it's like on pallet.
If it's on a pallet.
If it's on a pallet, we can pick it up and...
Yeah. And we will get it all to the area, and our skid loaders are tracts, so it...
Right. Won't tear it.
It won't tear through. There's too much.
That's too large.
But like right now, it's over in Thor. We ran into a mess with tile over there, so I would need to know a couple of days.
Well, your skid loader said on the sidewalk, but his truck wouldn't. His truck would be too large to go over it.
I'm guessing.
And I'm sure if we need to get one, there's somebody in town, we can get a skid loader. Because I got one in town right now, too.
Probably a forklift. My building, Gunderson's, have a forklift.
They could probably set it up for us, too.
Oh, I bet they did. Never thought about them doing that.
So if we get a little day, a couple of days notice, how many goes, a couple of days notice, we'll get something to get it off the truck and get it on the ground, anyway.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you, Ed.
Anybody else have anything else?
Well, Dr. Alberson on 180th over there, and he said it's the first time in several years he's been able to use that driveway. I guess they jetted it.
Yep. They jetted it.
He said it dried up, and he appreciates the help of them. He said, "There's still fluid someplace, but at least it's taken water now."
Yeah, I'd say, I know, I guess we jetted it through our property, but, yeah, I think from his, it runs north and west and then crosses the road somewhere.
Yeah. He said that's the first time he's been able to use that drive, so he appreciates it.
One thing on drainage, I don't know how many people got that email from Trish with ED10.
Yep.
I walked out and looked at it yesterday, last night, and he's cleaned out 90% of the blockages in the first 40 rides. I never went much closer, further south than that. And he did a nice job of taking out the blockages without altering the stream bed, you know. But it's still not great because it was really, really bad. I mean, it'd be nice if a guy could come in here and clean the trees off and, because first, you know, first weather, there's so much, so much debris falls into it. Because the trees are old, and some, you know, tree falls across and it sits there and turns into a dam from the trash that comes down. I think we should look into maybe, if we can even get rid of the trees on the one side so we can kind of just keep it clean. But I don't know. It's a natural stream.
Is that the one down in Beaver Township?
Yeah.
That turns into the stream?
Yeah. About halfway through Section 21. But what he done helped a ton because there was an old bridge, you know...
That right down in Keans?
Yeah.
Carol and Donny?
Yeah, south, south in there. And then he grubbed out that old bridge, and that was probably the worst area. But I don't know. You got that permission to do that?
I was going to say, we need to talk to somebody before they do too much.
I left a message, or I talked with Rick Hopper about it, and he was going to check into the landowner in that area. And, which looks like it's tied up at all. So.
Harland's, he's after them to get maps from the one up here on...
Yeah, I seen that.
Number five.
From Keane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's calling up here.
So we have a copy that...
Talking to me Friday night. He's watching the maps. I wonder how long it usually takes. Would it take that long?
Yeah. Derek Peterson, he's, he's moving up that dredge pretty rapidly.
I see they've purchased another piece of equipment.
Yeah, he's taken out probably a foot and a half right now, the way it looks. And it really looks nice what he's doing.
Good.
I mean, I don't know where this come from. He grubbed out a 16-foot bridge plank in the middle of the section, just laying up on the spoils and rocks and fence posts and...
Which, which direction of the highway?
South. I don't know how a 16-foot...
Southwest.
Yeah, south of the block, of the four block up there.
Was it a dumping spot at one time or something?
I don't know.
Well, it's a little, old bridge plank from an old crossing.
Yeah, maybe.
They got buried.
Got buried.
You know, them are covered with grease, so it...
Yeah, they last forever.
It probably lasts forever.
Yeah, but it looked pretty good. So, but he's doing a nice job.
Good.
Good.
So that's about all I got.
Anything else for anybody?
I'd make a motion for a jury.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.